I will bring to order this meeting for August 7th, 2012. Solana City Planning Commission. Welcome to everybody present. I hope you voted today. Encourage you to do so if you have not. First item on the agenda is approval of summary minutes from July 17. Is there any comment or motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 17 meeting.
I'd second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing items on the agenda. Item number two on the agenda is Application Z12-6 filed by Lloyds of Kansas LLC requesting a zoning change. This is staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application requesting the rezoning of a piece of property that is located at the corner of Woodland and North 7th Street. And basically, the best way to refer to it is the north half, or excuse me, the west half of the former Uptown Motel site. And John has the area outlined there for you in blue. And what you see in the photograph is still showing the former Uptown Motel in the photo, which has since been removed as of last, or actually earlier this year. And I bring to your attention that the current owner, Lloyds of Kansas LLC, purchased the property in January 2011. You heard a case in April of 2011 requesting rezoning of this entire site to I-2. You voted to postpone consideration of the application, requesting additional information from staff. And at that juncture, the applicant withdrew the application and, but did proceed with the removal of the building there, the U-shaped Uptown Motel building, in November of 2011. The site has been cleared except for the refurbished office and apartment portion which you see in that picture. So, the area that you see remove existing buildings, that has been removed. The area that you see in the center of the U there, that area has been retained. A food distribution business that's located currently in Oklahoma has expressed interest in constructing a food distribution warehouse at the northeast corner of North 7th and Woodland Avenue, and has a contract to purchase three 50-foot lots from Lloyds of Kansas LLC. And we explained to the business representatives that the current C-5 zoning does not allow warehouse operation, but warehouses are allowed as a conditional use in the C-6 district. So what we have before you today are two related and companion applications. The first one being a request by the current owner to rezone the three lots to C-6. And then we have a companion application to follow on the company's behalf in anticipation of the rezoning request being approved. The rezoning request should be considered and heard first because if it's not approved, there would be no reason to consider a conditional use permit. I think we have summarized the differences between C-5 and C-6. And also, you heard a lot last year about the distinctions between C-6 and I-2. And I think the most basic differences are C-6 requires paved parking and driveways. C-6 requires front yard green space to be provided. I-2 does not. And what, one thing you ought to consider is whether there are reasons why the subject property has remained vacant or zoned or cannot be used as, or redeveloped in accordance with the C-5 zoning that's in place today. I think you've seen that the majority of the area is Zone C-5, but we do have some planned development districts and some C-6 zoning directly to the northwest. So this is, C-6 is not completely unrelated to what is around it, but C-6 just allows for a few more intense commercial uses than what C-5 would allow. And if you look at the area, I'd say it's safe to say that most of the uses there are more intense commercial uses. The applicant believes that the northeast corner is suitable for redevelopment as a warehouse site and that the current C-5 zoning inhibits the redevelopment potential because it does not currently allow for warehouses. If you look at the character of the neighborhood, there are semi-industrial and warehouse uses around there. There's auto body repair shops, some wholesale uses, some truck storage yards. If you go south of Woodland, then you're looking at mostly a residential area. The planning commission was lukewarm on I-2 zoning. Last year, the city commission had requests for straight I-2 zoning on North 8th and North 7th that they approved planned development districts for instead. One thing you should consider, would C-6 zoning change the character of the site or the area? And we don't believe that adding a warehouse building in this location would change the character of the block or the North Santa Fe corridor. We have sewer in place in an alley parallel with North Santa Fe. There's a water main in North Santa Fe that's eight-inch, but also six-inch lines in North 7th Street and an existing fire hydrant at the northwest corner of 7th and Woodland. Storm drainage is more than adequate. The Woodland and North 7th are fairly quiet local streets. Santa Fe is a minor arterial. One thing that would have to be done is that vehicle parking and truck deliveries to the property have to be contained on-site. And I think you'll see how that's addressed with the conditional use site plan. If you look at the comprehensive plan, it does indicate that these types of uses should be allowed as secondary uses in an urban residential area. And they should complement and enhance existing character and surrounding uses of the neighborhood. One thing we don't have here is we don't have any buffers or adjacent residential property. And so, we have identified some alternatives for you. One would be to recommend approval of the applicant's request to change from C-5 to C-6. You could direct the applicant to amend his application to Plan C-6 or Planned Development District. You could postpone consideration if you think you need additional information to reach a decision. You could recommend denial of the request. We basically looked at this, that in 2011, we didn't think I-2 zoning fit with the surrounding area, that it was somewhat a spot zoning and something that staff couldn't support. But at the time, we were supportive of C-6 zoning. And so, we are equally supportive of C-6 zoning at this time as well because it does provide for paved parking and landscaping, which is not a requirement in I-2. One thing that we did want to note is that the alley, which you can't see because it had the building over it, was vacated, the north-south alley. And what usually happens is an alley goes half and half, half to the east, half to the west. And we wanted to get clarification from Mr. Wilson as to whether any portion of the 16-foot vacated alley is included in the pending sale of the property or whether the entire vacated alley would stay with the east parcel. But with that, I'd be open to any questions about this location and the zoning in the surrounding area.
Are there questions of staff? Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Thank you. I'm Lonnie Wilson, and I own the Lloyds of Kansas. I'm the principal and member of that LLC. Quite frankly, it's a piece of property that you're all familiar with from the last time I was here, and it's been cleaned up. And I think we've got a out-of-town purchaser who is wanting to bring in a building, a small warehouse. I believe it's about 2,000 square feet. I do have some pictures of other locations that he's built that he leases out to a national food chain for distribution. So, I'd be glad to share those with you. Dean may have them over there, too. I don't know. But yeah, there are. Now, that's a two-door. The one he's going to be building will be a four-door. But it is similar to that. It's nothing fancy, but it's good clean cut. This one would be a good location for, good fit for the neighborhood. And I'd like to see something happen on the property. Get back some of my cleanup cost. I'll try to answer any questions if you have them. I'm not sure.
How are you addressing the 16-foot vacated alley?
Well, I was going to keep it all if I could, but if it's a deal breaker, I would be more than happy.
No, it's not. I just wanted to make sure that the, we've got a width and depth on this lot, but we wanted to make sure that the 16-foot in the middle was accounted for in some fashion. It's yours to give or keep.
It's mine to keep.
Yes. But I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
So we got the right description.
I was going to keep it with the original property. If it comes up short, if they don't have enough room, then I'll negotiate with that.
Any questions of Mr. Wilson?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As this is a public hearing, we would hear from the public. Is there anybody who'd like to address the commission on this issue?
Hello. My name is John Blanchard. I live at 1117 West State Street. A couple of things on this. I was asked to come here today and give our support to this project by Barb Young of the North Solana Community Development Group. We've been doing a lot of work up on the north end of town. And back in April of 2011, we opposed the rezone of this to the industrial zone. And so, this C-6 rezone seems to be more in line with what the surrounding area is. And it's the kind of project that we feel is something that we can lend our support to. So, just wanted to give Mr. Wilson our support and also to acknowledge him for the nice job that he did cleaning up that lot. It looks really good, and it's been quite an improvement to the north side. So, thank you. And hopefully, this will be an addition to North Solana. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Blanchard? Thank you for your communication and collaboration. Glad to see you're all talking up there. Appreciate that. Are there any more public comments? If there being none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, any other further remarks or questions?
I have a question, just for clarification. First of all, I want to say I support this. I like what's done up there as far as the cleanup as well. That's a big improvement. But I want to make sure, this is a rezoning request. All the requirements, notifications, and everything have been met with this rezoning request. Is that correct?
Yes. This site is, meets all the eligible requirements to be zoned C-6. We will get into the details of the development rules as they apply to the specific proposal by the company. But this meets minimum lot size and everything else for C-6.
And the timelines and everything as far as posting for zoning, all been yes.
Yes.
Well, I-2 own property. Oh, are we going to close the, are we supposed to, since this is a public hearing, are we supposed to close the?
No, we're back to the commission now. Do I need to formally close the public portion?
You need to close the hearing and bring it back to the commission.
All right. We will close the public portion then at this point and bring it back to the commission.
Well, I agree with this request. I think C-6 fits the area really well, and I think that it'll be a suitable zoning and hopefully get some, something done on that property.
I agree. It's a nice improvement.
With that, I'd make a motion that we approve Application Z12-6 with, just as it stands.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If being none, the motion carries. We'll move on to the next portion of this request, number three, Application CU12-5, also filed by Lloyds, and requesting the conditional use.
Mr. Wilson, you need to stay for the next item. This is a companion application. Now that you have indicated that you are supportive of this property being zoned C-6, one of the uses allowed as a conditional use on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis is warehousing. And the specific request is to construct an approximately 2,000-square-foot warehouse building on this property that's depicted on this site plan. And so, you can see that the lot itself contains a little over 17,000 square feet, and only 2,000 of that would be occupied by building. I think John had some photographs that we were furnished that basically indicates that this have a slight office presence, but will have offloading facilities. And what was indicated to me by the business representative is that they would get approximately one semi-delivery today, or per day, but that they would have a fleet of step van type vehicles that would be route vehicles that would originate here and go out and do different route deliveries. John, I think in one of your photographs, you can kind of see the nose of, I think it's the second one. You can see the nose of the step van type facility. So, some of the parking stalls that you see on the site plan are not for employees or even customers, but they're for the parking of the step vans for route drivers. So, your role in this case is to first determine whether the change in use from a vacant lot to a distribution warehouse facility would have any negative effects on the surrounding neighborhood, and then look at the building location, building design, site layout, and determine whether you think that would fit in with the development pattern and use of adjacent properties. So, we've walked through the C-6 requirements. The lot contains 17,550 square feet, which means minimum lot size requirements. Warehouse facilities are allowed as a conditional use. There's a minimum 25-foot setback from a public street. They can cover 50% of a lot with building, and they're not coming close to that. They need to provide one parking space for every 2,000-square-feet of floor area of warehouse, which would be one space, and then one space for the office. The other spaces provided are for the step vans. Parking areas and access drives must be paved. And then, we've determined that approximately 1,870 square feet of landscaped green space needs to be provided along Woodland and along North 7th frontages. We do not have a planting plan for you at this time, and the front yard green space here appears to be pretty minimal. But we did discuss in our staff report that the proposed driveway widths, 47 feet and 43 feet, are excessive, and those would need to be narrowed down. Although, if you concur, they could have a driveway width of up to 40 feet if you think that is appropriate due to need to accommodate semis. So, the applicant believes that, and we agree, that allowing this facility would put a vacant, unutilized lot into productive use. This would be infill redevelopment, which the city is trying to encourage. The applicant states that the warehouse facility would be compatible with established uses in the area, and the 2,000-square-foot building won't be out of scale with what's around it. And they don't believe what they're proposing to do would dominate the surrounding area. And I think from staff's perspective, if the paved parking and landscaping is provided, this facility will be an upgrade over previous development. One of the things you have to find is that adequate off-street parking will be available. And they, we would note that the number of spaces on the plan is more than adequate. And the applicant did clarify that there will be route trucks and one semi-delivery per day, and that the, most of the loading docks that you see there are for putting material or produce onto the step vans. All the utilities and drainage facilities are already in place in this lot. And again, the access would either be from Pacific down 7th Street or Santa Fe on Woodland. And both Santa Fe and Pacific are minor arterial streets. So while this is not a location on an arterial or collector's street, neither Woodland or 7th would be considered residential streets because of the development that's there. The maximum driveway width is 30 feet, which can be increased to 40 feet with the approval of the City Engineer and Planning Commission. And the city engineers indicated that if they can demonstrate that the 40 feet is needed to accommodate semi-turning movements, that they would be supportive of that. So, your options would be to approve the conditional use permit, and the applicant's proposed site plan is submitted, subject to any conditions that you deem appropriate. You could approve it and require that they make certain revisions to the site plan. You could postpone consideration if you think there's a need for additional information, or you could deny the application and give your reasons therefor. We would recommend alternative two, approving the permit subject to certain revisions being made to the plan. One of that being that the green space provided does not add up to the 1,870 square feet required, and that the driveways on the plan in front of you are wider than what city code would allow. So we would recommend that the permit be approved, subject to revisions of the driveway width and providing additional front yard green space. And with that, we'd be happy to address any questions you have about the plan.
The green space in the model, is that something just over 1,000? Is that what I read?
Yeah. It's very, it's been difficult. This is an AutoCAD drawing and not done to any particular graphic scale. So when they submit for a building permit, they'll have to have a survey and two-scale drawing. But if the driveways are narrowed slightly, there's additional space there to gain additional depth. The other thing is that the right-of-way for 7th Street is 80 feet wide. So you're naturally going to have more green space behind the curb that's in the right-of-way. But the, there's an obligation for them to provide 1,870 square feet on their own property. The plan there obviously is for paved parking.
Can you, can you give a variance for that? We see that that is not necessarily for that, or is that just for C-6 zoning, you're saying that has to be 1,800?
The landscaping regulations allow for, the formula is based on the width and depth of the lot. So if you have a lot that's 117 feet by 150 feet, we look at the frontage on 7th Street, we look at the frontage on Woodland, and determine that, that you have the authority to vary that, but it would have to be based on some pre-existing conditions or some unique physical features of the site that would make it not practical to meet those minimum requirements. In other words, if there were space constraints, or we've had cases where somebody's redeveloping and 100% of the lot is already paved, then there is provisions to grant relief from the strict application of the landscaping regulations. But from our ability to measure, if you narrowed the width of some of those driveways, that would increase the area available for green space and would get them closer.
I guess my reason for my saying is sometimes new concrete looks better than weeds that are not taken care of or landscaped. I mean, you can put landscaping in to get the occupancy, but if you don't have the water or the, if they're not going to maintain it, this is a distribution, I don't see it being a plus or on his top of the mind to take care of a lot more green space. I guess what I'm saying is that just, I don't want to create something trying to get it there and then it become an eyesore based on lack of, somebody want to take care of that much shrubbery or grass. And then my next question would be, and then Lonnie can address it, is to me, it looks like it's laid out well for the parking spaces for the vans and the semis that would be there. I'm wondering what the distance is between the end of the parking dotted line to the front of the building? Is there any type of constraint that if you pushed it, if you're adding more green space, does that push the trucks up further to the building from the bottom? I don't know how much space that is in between there. I can't, can't see from there.
There's front. The way to do this, fix the corner. From here to here is 36 feet.
Now go down.
Okay. You want to know from here to here? That is 85 feet. What would happen is that this, these might get moved up slightly. This will get narrower, so you'll gain green space there. This might get slid up, or this might slide over. But that, that is where you would pick up additional width of green space.
And how much do they need additional?
We're not able to tell at this time because Mr. Meisner was not able to tell me a specific scale for this drawing. So, when they submit for a building permit, they would have to provide a survey and the dimensions to scale.
The 47-foot width of the existing curb cuts, I don't know the streets that well up there, but going to 40-foot, does that still provide plenty of space for a semi to turn out running over the curb all time? Or would it be just as wise, since they're there, to leave them at 47 feet?
Those are not existing curb cuts. There's no curb cuts there at all. And so, the engineering department has already advised them that they need to narrow them. The way, the best way to address that is that there's, because the right-of-way is 80 feet up there, there's about 20 feet between the property line and the curb line. And so, you can put some pretty generous radiuses on the actual, because the 40-foot width is measured at the property line. But if you're putting wings out for the turning movements out at the street, it could measure, you know, 55 feet or something. So you can put wings out in the right-of-way to help the turning movement of trucks and semis.
That makes sense. Thank you.
If it's appropriate, I have a question for Mr. Wilson. How do you envision in this plan the semis coming, you envision them coming south on North Street or North 7th and through the parking lot and then backing up to that dock?
If we're done with staff, why don't we just invite Mr. Wilson up?
I'm not really sure that I'm the
I'm not really sure that I'm the right person to answer that question because basically alls I did was sell the lot to the gentleman, subject to him being able to get a building permit. And.
Do you think they can address?
It was a long drive. He was up by Tulsa, Oklahoma, and he says, called and asked if I could step in for him and represent him, or did he, did I feel like he needed to cancel another meeting and drive up here for this one? And I said, well, I'd be glad to stand in for him. I would assume, and this is strictly my assumption, any of yours would be just as good, whether he would come off of North Street, come down Seventh Street, turn off. It would be my assumption that they would come in, but that's, that's just pure guess.
Do you think they can address both the width of the drive issue and the landscaping issues?
Well, with the wings that Dean was talking about, I think that would probably work. But again, that's a question that I'm not really first to answer. I, they've built several of these for this major company around the country, and that's how come we had the pictures. And he looked at it, and I'm assuming that he wouldn't have made the offer to purchase if he didn't think it would work.
Is he aware that if, if he does get C6 zoning, that he will have to provide landscaping for that?
I think he is, Dean. I don't.
Yeah, I've had that conversation with him.
I can't imagine they can't get another 700 feet out of the corner or, I mean, it just doesn't look like a problem.
I'm sorry, I want more help, but that's, that's quite frankly, I'm the seller and that was it.
Is it a 24-hour-a-day facility?
You know, I don't.
I don't, I don't believe that's the case. That the way he described it to me, there are route drivers who do daytime routes. They're going to leave their vans or step vans parked here. But it's basically come in the morning, load up produce in a truck, do a distribution route, and bring the truck back in the evening.
I saw Mr. Ash leaving a smile on his face, so I presume he doesn't have any.
I invited him to come down. He was here to lend support if he thought it was needed. And I don't think he thought everything was going pretty good, and he didn't probably want to stand up and talk. So yeah, he, he had told me that he would like to see the building put up across there, and he's the one that'll be looking at it more than anybody else.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? I might open the public portion then. Is there any comment from the public on this issue? If there's none, I'll bring it back to, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there any more opinions or information that you need? Or is there a motion for the chair?
I'd be ready to make a motion if the commission's ready. I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit as per CU 12-5, subject to reduction in driveway width to the recommended 40-foot and increase landscape area to, I believe you said 1,870 feet, is that correct?
Yes, 1,870 square feet would be the minimum area.
Those two provisions.
There's a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Issue passes. We'll move on to other matters.
There are other matters in the information packet that we have provided you. There's just some information, an update on there about the city's efforts to increase youth participation on boards. And there's some outlines there about how they would participate. And there would be training for them, what would be expected of them by the city in terms of their participation. Probably the thing that's most notable is that one of the groups, which includes the city's Human Relations Department, would be, rather than making each board responsible, they, they would be involved in the recruitment efforts of that. And then the orientation and training and liaisons, such as myself, would, would be involved in some of the, the training and, and on, on the purpose of the commission and what would be done. And the idea would be that they would have a regular seat at the table, that they would be asked to give input and opinions. The only thing on this board, from a statutory standpoint, they wouldn't be able to cast a vote that would, would count towards approval or denial, but they would be fully engaged and participating members if they so chose. But, but the idea is to try to match up youth with, give them an understanding of what the various boards do and then, and solicit people who have that interest towards that board. But this would be citywide with youth on Parks and Recreation Board and Arts and Humanities and Planning Commission and potentially Building Advisory Board and other boards. But I just wanted to give you an update on that, how that program is moving forward and what the aspects of that would be. The other thing I have in your packet, which comes up.
One question, when you got into the age question, then how are you defining youth? Is that somebody in school or?
I think it is, it could include people in college who could be at Kansas Wesleyan or K-State Salina. They would, they would fit into that. The, I think the general range that I heard discussed was in the age group of 16 to 22 or 23, so that they could be people who were in, in college or post-high school situation, that they would be considered in that category as well if they were students.
Is there statutory age, minimum age for being on this board?
Well, there's, there's just the statutory eligibility and, and who can vote. There's no age limit, otherwise Dr. Hodges probably wouldn't, wouldn't be here. But there, you, you have to be a minimum of meeting a voting age in order to vote and actually be a full-fledged member of the community. But because of various legal requirements that relate to planning commissions and the statutes, they wouldn't be able to be voting members. But they would, they would be able to have, participate and ask questions and offer observations and opinions.
How much mentoring time are you expecting the staff to take with this? Is that's going to be another expense to the taxpayer to mentor these kids?
Well, a lot of the mentoring is going to be done by the Human Relations Department on a group basis. But then once the, there's an indication of which board, I wouldn't expect it would be much more than the mentoring that would go into any of the adult members.
We're putting charge of dress code, buddy.
I'm free, doesn't cost much.
Tattoos.
Take their time, cost taxpayers money.
But it also, I mean, it, there's no obligation or responsibility, but else if, if you have interactions with people in the community or students or whatever, and you, you identify people that could be interested. We, we had a person that was targeted, but they graduated from high school and, and then didn't go to school here locally and moved away. But had they still lived here and were attending post-high school education here, that they would still be eligible. So it's not limited just to high school age, but youth could include college age as well.
I think it's a great program, and there, there might be a little bit of cost to the citizens for this, but I think that's how you build citizen leaders in the future. It's just like the Leadership Salina program. And what a great way to get young people involved and let them actually see what happens in a board like this. So I think it's a wonderful one.
And I agree. I think in our country, we're seeing it's really difficult for young people to become actively involved in the public service and political process. And if we can do anything that encourages that, we should. And our service is free here, and if they're willing to put in the time to commit to helping our city better itself as a youth, I think it's commendable. So I say.
Yeah, we have a, the chamber has a Junior Leadership Salina program. And if people were involved in that and were looking to get more involved, this would be a, a place where somebody involved in Junior Leadership Salina could look to to get involved even more so.
Our, one of our former Planning Commission chairpeople, Margaret Jankovic, is involved with the, through the Greater Salina Community Foundation, a program for youth leadership there. And she might be a resource for people to recruit to look for.
Yeah, I think once this got up and running and, and the mentoring and training and what was needed, I, I think it, it could be self-sustaining by word of mouth, youth to other youth or people involved in those various programs. I think the, the first hurdle is, is just introducing the youth involvement for the first time and under what circumstances and ground rules. And so I included all this in the package, just so you could see what the Human Relations Department had come up with in the way of what, what they thought was important. And, and part of that was to give people who are staff liaisons to boards, you know, confidence that the youth that would be involved would, would have a commitment to be involved and attend and be active. But then it's incumbent, then, once they are appointed to serve as a youth liaison, that they be treated as equal with all of you and their opinions solicited and give them a chance to express those, so.
Please pass along to them our thanks for their good work and encourage them to push it on faster. I think we've heard about this for a couple of years now, and so I'm glad to see it's moving forward, but.
My other item that was in your packet was just a question of how does your community accommodate accessory housing and Salina doesn't? And two or three other times when we discussed it, the Planning Commission was not interested in it, but it, particularly in real estate markets where housing or land costs are much, much higher than ours, there is a movement afoot to come up with ways to accommodate, whether you want to call it a, a mother-in-law flat or whatever that is. But it's a, it's the ability to construct essentially like a backyard cottage or separate living quarters on the same lot. And today, we allow, in single-family zone, we allow one dwelling unit. But, but the idea behind some of these would be to set up ground rules whereby somebody could, if they wanted to accommodate a family member or something like that, that they could build a separate cottage, like instead of a garage or something on, on the same lot. So it's something for you to think about and percolate. And if it's not something that we allow for today, if it's something that a majority of commissioners think that we should create a roadmap to allow, we can certainly work in that direction. Previous commissions were not interested in going that direction, but it, it's an issue that doesn't go away because of aging population and rising land and housing costs and things that, it, it is a way to accommodate more housing opportunities.
Have you ever had a request for one?
We have. But it hasn't gotten. There is one, one that I think of in particular. It's on East Iron, and it was owned by the Beaverley family. And how that was done, because the zoning there was R2, basically, they created a, they took a single-family home and, and created it into a duplex. And so there's a tenant that lives in the front and then a, a family member that has some limited disabilities that lives in the rear, and it's, it's basically a two-unit. And the rental income from the front part helps sustain the resident who lives in the rear. But that, that was addressed not by having a separate cottage, but we were able to get there by basically creating a duplex. But that, that is an example of that type of approach.
Well, I for one think it's a great concept, and it's coming. I know several people in town that already have mother-in-law type cottages over their, their.
Over a garage or something like that.
Garage-type settings. And I agree with the information you gave us, it needs to probably pass through the comprehensive plan and.
Yeah, the hard part is, and people say, well, it's okay if it's a, another family member or elder parent or something like that. But, you know, then to turn it into a general rental situation, it can be a different, or harder, harder thing to monitor. But I, I think that it can be structured in a way that you're, I mean, part of the motivation is if you have a, another family member or an older family member, they can be on the same premises as, as the primary dwelling.
I think I might just check with my son and daughter-in-law and see if they'd be like for me to move into their backyard here in a year or two. You could take it, take it.
We'll have about a 750 square foot shed, so.
Yeah. I'd do.
I could probably answer that for them.
That's all I'm afraid of. I think it'll work well for others. I'm not sure it'd work well for, but I, I don't think it's, are there communities, seriously, are there communities that have, have this in place that we could look at in Kansas?
Yeah, that, I don't, I, I can look at, I know, I'm aware of some in other states that have higher housing and land costs than Kansas tends to have. But I think we could give you some examples to, to just show you in a, in a future packet.
But you're talking about a new development being like a PDD or something that's planned for that, like the lots would have to be 220 feet deep by.
Well, you would, you would set up parameters and say, if, if these factors are all present, you have this lot size and you have this, then you can do this. And if you don't, you can't. But the hard part's drawing that line. You, you do that, and then somebody comes in and has a 75 by 120-foot lot, and they say, we'd like to do this instead of having a garage. Can we do it? And.
I don't know. That'd be in favor of existing. I mean, again, if I lived behind, if I lived on Highland and some of those are 220-foot deep lots, and now you've passed that and somebody's able to build a, a second dwelling back there, it kind of, I mean, it's just, it's kind of an interesting.
It's complicated about where, where it could work. Because if you had employers that needed, and they needed additional housing, students going to college, there's a lot of ways that could be used to provide denser housing in an area downtown.
Yeah, I, I think what we could do is just give you some examples of how it's, where it's, I mean, they've given some examples of here is where it's worked and where it hasn't. But I think it's all in the details of how you draw it up and whether it's, it's allowed, you know? You might have someplace where we could say it's okay and covenants would say it's not permitted. So you still have that. But we, we can bring you back some examples. My final item is just, we will meet on the 21st. Several of you have terms that expire the 31st of August, but are eligible for reappointment if you get your expression of interest to the city clerk. And on the 21st, we will be bringing back the hospice application that was referred back to you by the city commission. As we reported earlier, Mr. Morse, who's one of the neighbors across the street in the hospital, we're having some continued discussions after the city commission meeting, and they've completed their discussions. And our, the item is ready to be put back on your item as an agenda item, as an official referral from the city commission. The other reason for that, and you'll, you'll find your packet quite thick, but there was quite a bit of additional information that was presented to the city commission that should have been presented to you the first time. So you'll, you'll be getting a fairly thick packet of information, a lot more appraisal information and conflicting appraisal information and, and all of that. But you'll have a fairly thick supporting packet, but it will be everything that the city commission got that you didn't.
Is the commission asking us to reconsider this item?
They're asking you to.
So it's open to all of us to participate or is it?
Yes, it's open to, as a brand-new, fresh approach, to, to take all this new additional information and to see if, if there are either based on that information or based on some conditions that may or may not be agreeable to make, that would make the Veridian proposal more palatable. So that, that's what you're being asked to consider. And then we, we will bring Smokey's Auto Body, the body shop at Santa Fe and Pacific, and that will be back.
That's the 21st as well?
That's the 21st as well. And they, they had a not legal paint booth, which has now disappeared from the property. They never got a permit to actually install a paint booth and so we'll, we're not aware whether they're attempting to paint cars without a paint booth or what it is that they're doing, but they will be invited and they'll have an opportunity to persuade you that they're doing just fine and will report to you all the conditions that have not been complied with.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or remarks? We adjourn.